Okay, we'll bring the meeting to order. We have the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go into the minutes, I'd like to observe a moment of silence in memory of Curtis Hopstead who passed away on Saturday morning, who is our legislator of District 15. Okay, everyone had a chance to read the minutes of the last meeting? And everybody have a chance to see the agenda?
I would like to just add a little something there, Steve has a quick question regarding some gravel, let me do that to it please.
Okay. Gravel question?
Gravel question.
That would be on the new business?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Will all accept them, motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Just like a little discussion, I should have brought it up at the last meeting, but I didn't notice it was guessing because there's a delegation. Did you just decide to take that off during the last meeting?
I did, yes.
Is that something that should be discussed or?
No, I don't. I have gone through with Lonnie, the century code and visitors and delegations are nowhere in the legal description of a meeting. I'm not sure when it was started with Ramsey County, but it has become so disruptive that I, as chairman, chose to take it off the agenda at this time. When the next chairman goes on board, they're more than welcome to revisit it and anyone else. Is there any other discussion? I have a motion in the second on the floor to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same side?
Just put it right here.
Okay. Kevin, you're up.
Okay, as far as our projects that we have planned this summer, there's no new updates. There's nothing significant anyway, the paving, well, we could talk to the paving on nine, eight.
That river is talking about starting their patches on eight, nine on Thursday of this week, getting those done, but they're not going to come back and do the main thing on both projects, they're doing back to back, but they're pushing it back to the middle of the line. We're still with some finishing by the completion date, it's just scheduling in the area.
And same way with the gravel, nothing started on any of our gravel projects yet. They are starting to crush the product, but no dates, I'll definitely start the gravel. So any questions there as far as our projects? Okay, the second item there, I need to order a 72-inch arch culvert to replace one that's failed to new township between sections 30 and 31, which would be just west of where these sandings guard used to live. And the culvert has rusted out and the bottom is pushed way up, they've just decided to replace it. And it's going to cost about $5,650.
What type of road is that on again, Kevin?
It's a township road, let's see, one, two miles south of Edlorn at east, maybe a mile east, it's not exactly a mile, I think about a mile. It's not a very big cooley, really small cooley.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the cost of $5,650 for that arch culvert.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call. Brown?
Aye.
Bolson?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Leifon?
Aye.
Hi sir.
Aye.
All right, Nick has identified four different spots that need overlay patches, and none of them are real big. One is just south of Ramsey six on four, kind of like the Fenster Slough, just north of the Fenster Slough. The second one is on three, just south of Bay over those two culverts that settle from time to time. And the carry one, just south of town, there's a little wheel raptor depression or something in the center of the road that we need to fix. And then just one north of the gravel tracks on Oak Street. And using our bid prices that we got in the spring from Strata, we're going to cross the cost of approximately $30,000. So I guess I entertain a motion to go through with that project.
One question, we're going to, on the bridge on the Red Road, there's a couple divots there that...
Little ones?
Right by the bridge, gave it away. I think some asphalt would help that.
We can hand patch those, but yep, we'll definitely get...
Is that where the, uh, there's some erosion?
Yeah, I think I know your place.
Right, by the bridge and... Right on it.
Yep.
It's a thud every time you hit both sides, so those kind of things, you do take tires off of everything, carries a lot of trouble.
Benson takes care of that bridge, but we'll work it out between the two of us to make sure it's done.
Okay. And then that little hump there, right south of Church up on three there?
Oh yeah, I don't know.
What is that?
It's weird because it's a hump up, I don't know what that is.
But you know, but it ran it was sideways, I think.
The hump?
Maybe I'm going too fast.
And it's just one lane of traffic, it's, the southbound lane isn't quite as bad, so I, we looked inside that culvert and everything we can't see.
There is a culvert there.
Because it's not rusted out, it's not separated.
You have your little hump there.
There is a hump, and the humps are hard to explain, I don't know what, why that happens.
Been here quite a while.
Is it some kind of seasonal thing or?
Do we have a debus?
Nope.
You remember it now?
Um, how far north is it?
Just south of Church. Half miles or quarter mile.
North of Canada, by a little way.
See, I don't go north of Church.
Oh, you don't, okay.
It's not, it's not huge, it's just really sharp.
Is the culvert shallow?
Nope, it's rising above the culvert.
Like we put a house whole time here once and I don't know, just look at it, I guess.
But does it stay there all year long?
Yeah.
So it might be something they contend around it going down, so it went down and just hasn't been?
I don't think so, because it never does, so it's a weird one, hard to explain. The airtime is a little bit worse, but not, not a lot. I guess we'll look at it again, I don't know what, we're sure what we can do there, but we'll look at it again, maybe.
The overlay on three, you're talking about that hill, that hill just south of Kenny Plaza? Those two, that's true.
No, there's two culverts.
They, they, the bumps show up there in the wintertime and then they go away. You're not talking about that though? This three is usually a pretty good culvert.
Any roads you're thinking about that you wanted to comment on?
No, I think the width that Kevin had is pretty good and I agree that we could do something, so the church people, I think the church there, that little hump there, kind of odd, but it'd be nice if we could figure something through that, because he had what semi and what he kind of talked to you earlier sideways, so.
Especially the north one.
So I'll entertain a motion to advertise for bid price, are you going to advertise for bid prices?
No, we got the bid prices already for last spring.
To spend approximately $30,000?
You need a motion on this?
We took bids, but yeah, probably.
So...
Okay, no motion in the second. Roll call. Bolson?
Aye.
Leifon?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Hi sir.
Aye.
And I also got three bids for the putting up the outside shell, the Edmore shop. Go Hansen Construction put a bid in for $35,600. Attachment builders was $32,000 and Plumber Construction was $28,000.
And this is just labor?
Yep, all labor.
What is dimension again, how many?
Forty-eight by sixty-four by sixteen.
Twenty-eight seems to be a pretty good price.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve a little bit on the shop shell and Edmore?
Second.
I have a motion in the second to accept a little bid with Plumber Construction, is there any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, same side, the motion carried.
And one other thing, just a heads up, we probably rent an excavator around the second April of July, the bridge work, put this 72-inch arch and the Maloney Bridge, I still haven't got culvert ordered for that, so. And then there's one other spot in Newbury Township that we're going to lower some culverts where somebody did clean out, they're too high now. And I'm not going to get prices together on that yet, but I should have one at the next meeting, what it's going to cost for that excavator.
Do you remember how Ann and Kevin and Brock and I were just...
It was about four hours a month. It shouldn't take us any more than a month. That's all I have, I can talk to the speed study and we'll get to that too.
Well, should, are you guys, are you guys in a hurry? Steve, you're okay? Steven, Steve, are you okay? Okay. We'll move on to unfinished business, the speed study results on Highway two weeks.
Yeah, we did look into that land where the frontage road would be, and that got sold to the adjacent landlords, so that probably won't be, it'll be tough to buy that land back from these landlords now. There's still, it was an eighty-foot right-of-way, is what it was, section, but they're going to want top dollar for it now, if they try to pursue that pass, so just for a heads up, we, that right-of-way has been purchased by these adjacent landlords. And...
So it goes right to the edge of the state property that they own?
It went into the, these frontage road things, they went into the private property, right along the...
And there was nothing recorded in the deed that said that there was a right-of-way?
There was, but then the owner, Ackerman, later sold it to those, as a separate parcel, as a separate deed to those landlords. So they actually own it now. No idea what they paid for it, that's not in the deeds, so I don't know.
So at one time it was plotted out?
Eighty feet wide, I guess.
Really? And then it went from who to who?
Ackerman to close by his and by any of his.
But when the parcel, when the right-of-way was in there, whose name was it in?
Uh, I didn't see that deed, but I would assume it was dedicated to the house use. I don't know, I can't, I didn't see that.
Because that was in Ackerman's name for quite some time before I got that one, so...
Yep, Ackerman.
And so it went to Ackerman, from Ackerman to Ackerman Land Company maybe, or something like that?
Yep, I think that was about, and then...
And then just got to beat it up, the right-of-way to adjacent property owners.
Exactly. Oh, and then I did talk to State, Greg Schramko, and he said that they're going to do a whole traffic count on that, a whole new traffic count on that area, just so they have current, up-to-date information, whether, where the vehicles are turning off, where the traffic's coming on, and they'll, they'll know all that with the new speed study that they're going to do, the state's going to do.
On Highway two?
Yep.
And that's what we asked.
So it might take some time to get that done, he didn't have any idea how long the deed, folks have a bit more to do there.
As long as they're on that, I got Adam, can you hear me?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. You're on the board at the Fedex there with the oil company, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Was there any thought about Adam turning lane out there into the station? Or is that in the works or?
Yes.
The state is putting one in there.
Yes.
There was talk about it before we took the state in, but at that point in time, we would have to pay for it, I think, on our own. So we decided to get it, then the state decided to put one in, well, until then last fall, because it was supposed to happen to cover the, I believe.
They haven't given you a date?
No, not that I know of.
Rick Schramko said at the last meeting that they would be in by fall. And he said close construction got the bid for it.
Close has that bid?
Yeah.
So he will get it done. Do you remember what they were trying to charge you at the station?
Honestly, I have no idea, I just, I just know that there would have been a bill where we would have had to book bill, I believe, a while back, no, so I honestly, I...
Okay, that's all right. I mean, I...
I'm having a hard time understanding why the state decides to pay for one and then decides you don't get one and we're going to have to put in J-turns instead. Based on traffic studies, I think we need to take this farther, I think we need better answers as to why one would get one and the next one would not.
Well, I agree 100% because I did some research on it, and they're putting in, in other districts, they're putting in turnoff lanes, and from what I get out of it, it's the saturation level of left-hand turns coming off that they're concerned about, but he said that the speed study showed that everybody's going the same speed, so he didn't think that that was an issue at the last meeting. And I know that this came up probably three or four years ago now, but I talked to David Ryman about why he doesn't just make improvements to his and put a turnoff lane in there, and he said that the state told him that he had to put it into their specifications and he would be responsible for anything that happened. And he didn't think it was fair that that happened because that turned, that turned into that property was there before he bought the property. And he also said that he didn't want to be responsible for a turnoff lane because he felt that they would just find something wrong with it if something happened and it'd be his fault, so, and I agree with him that, that they were going to put a turnoff lane there, they were going to raise that highway back, and what year was it that we got the $100 million to help us with our county projects and county...
Twelve.
Twelve.
Yeah, in twelve. And so then they set a new target date of, target elevation of 1454 before the highway will be raised, because they gave up that money. And so it was at that time that our district representative for the DOT said that there will not be any turnoff lanes on Highway two, and he's fit to do it. He's, no matter what happens, he's not going to put turnoff lanes here, and I think we should go above his head too, I think we should talk to Grant Levi and tell him, we don't think we're getting a fair shake here, we need turnoff lanes out on that highway, there is way too much traffic. And with the research that I did on J-turns, you have to go up to a half a mile past your turnoff, do a J-turn on the highway with a 60-foot semi, and come back again to turn off the highway, and it doesn't make any sense to me, those turnoffs are probably three or four times as long as a regular turnoff lane are, so I think they could put in half a dozen of them for the two J-turns that they want to put in there.
Exactly.
And that would, I don't think we need a traffic count to tell us that, he can go ahead and do his traffic count if he wants to, but I think we need to convince him that we need them, and if it takes community support or a letter from the entire commission saying that we recommend that they put in turnoff lanes, I think we should start with that and go as far as we can. Richard's here today just as an observer, but I've talked to him, he doesn't believe that semis are, are safe on those J-turns either.
Well, the Ackerman turnoffs are, are the place where the next horrific accident is probably going to happen. And I would like to think that we can be proactive rather than reactive. And if, if we have a, a statement that they're never going to happen, no matter how many people get killed on it, I think that means to us that we have to go further.
The statement was made, it was probably four years ago now, and I was very disappointed when he did the study and didn't come up with that being one of the options as to how we could solve the problem, because I agree, people are going 60, 70 miles an hour, and you can put on your left-hand turn blinker all you want to, but when somebody's turning out into the passing lane and they don't see your blinker on until they're right behind you.
And I don't get a lot of phone calls, but I've had four phone calls in the last two weeks of people who habitually make left turns off of Highway two in those areas, and every one of them has told me of an instance where they've almost either had to run in the ditch, hit a four-wheeler that was crossing the highway with children on it, or be rear-ended. Well, it's obvious that something has to be done, and these, and these turnoff lanes are the answer.
Turnoff lanes, it's over.
They're, they're the cheapest, they're, and they're the answer.
The approaches are there.
Exactly.
You know, I could see it if, if there wasn't even an approach there yet, but the approaches are there, they allowed them to go in there, they worked really good when they were hauling dirt out, five million yards of dirt out of there.
Exactly, they had those turnoff lanes all... They had temporary turnoff lanes in all of those places where they were hauling dirt with semis, and then they took them all again.
You know, at Ackerman's, at least they have three different ones that they can, you know, talk to people in behind them to see in the turn signal, but at, at Bynie, they absolutely have to put turnoff lanes there, that's all there is to it.
Well, the one out here to the new station is the only one, they're going one way into that place, that's it. I mean, there's no turning lane.
No.
I just, it's beyond me that, I'm glad to see it open, but I wish they would have fixed this highway before they opened the door. I mean, it's just, somebody's trying to turn, next one comes in behind it, and they're stopped right in the passing lane. They're sitting in the passing lane, and boy, you better...
Better be watching.
They saw huge growth out in the western part of the state, and eventually there's turnoff lanes out there. This, that kind of growth is happening right here, Devil's Lake, and they need to pay attention.
Well, we got to plan the tack, and then we're up to go back in here again, I guess we'll go around them again. I think we should write a letter to Grant Levi and request turnoff lanes and see what, and have Craig come back here and let us know what he says.
I think that's a good idea, Bill, but I think we did that two or three years ago, and we got a big no, but let's try it again, yeah.
Well, I think we left them options two or three years ago, you know, caution, caution lights or, or turning lanes or lowering the speed limit, and they said, whatever you do, you're going to pay for. Well, I think that we should...
Well, we don't have to pay for it, it's a state highway.
This is a state highway, yeah.
They're getting federal funding to keep the drill safe, so it's time for them to step up and do it. Elizabeth, could you, you can look up there and see when we wrote that letter, you know which one I was talking about, right?
I kept track for, since the last meeting, and I would dare say that we are challenged 50% of the time turning the left turn off that I'm reading. By the way, I hardly get...
I just, I agree with you, I mean, it's just something I've done, I mean, they've just thrown up a stone wall here, I mean, said no, that's not acceptable, I guess, in our eyes, in our county, so. For the safety of the residents of Ramsey County, we need to get something.
Oh, that jail, that's ridiculous.
Well...
They're widening the...
Trucking a boat?
A truck and a boat can't...
How's a semi ever going to do it? I'm happy that they're widening the Highway 19 going west of Devil's Lake, and that will allow, that, that kind of a side road will allow people to get off to the side either. This, this is...
And we, and we got a response, we, we wrote that letter too, requesting turnoff lanes on Highway 19, because of the, because of the speed of, of cars coming over the embankment for the dikes, and you get there and you got a school bus in front of you, and you're coming over at 70 miles an hour, and you can't turn off, you can't do a thing. And the people who live out there were complaining that they were concerned that their children were going to get killed on that highway, and they responded to that, I would think they should respond to this, this safety issue as well.
Kevin, we had a design, they gave a design to us for Highway 19, didn't they, on what they were doing out there?
Uh, yeah, those lane, those turnoff lanes.
Yeah. For the eastbound traffic, when I get to the airport, are they going to turn a lane in there or not, do you remember? I don't remember.
I think so.
The left end?
To turn into the airport, eastbound, right at the airport, you remember, Bill?
I think so.
I don't think there's one there.
I don't, can't remember.
No.
We had the traffic study for it, but I don't remember.
There's a left, there'll be a turn for the other people going...
West.
West.
West, a turnoff lane on the right, but that's not, that's not...
You don't think there's nothing there? I know they widened it, right?
Right, they'll have big shoulders again, so there'll be room, you can try and meet three cars there if you got in that situation, but actual painted lines, I don't think they'll be there.
Well, they're going all the way out to Woodland, I think, matter of fact, I think they're going all the way out to where they matched up with the new pack of construction.
Any place that there's not the wide shoulders, you know, like Six Mile Bay had the wide shoulders and Woods Rutner, I mean...
Z-Box?
Z-Box had, they're going to fill everything in that didn't have the wide shoulders, basically.
Yep.
I think that's going all the way to the market.
Woodland Resort or, you know, that road, they, we need to request them for there too, if they, if they're not in the plan.
I think the right ones...
Eastbound traffic should have something, because there's a lot of people coming in from the west, and, and at least that, you know, westbound traffic generally just has to slow down and wait to turn if there's somebody coming from the west, but, but I think the east, the eastbound have to have some place to get off.
Kind of amazing they didn't put something into the airport, if there isn't there.
Looks like it's pretty wide there, looks like it's built out pretty wide there, I was out there.
Did you check on that all for us?
Yeah.
I think there is going to be a turnoff for the airport.
So what's the consensus, should we write a letter to the state highway director?
I think we should go right to Grant Levi, address it to Grant Levi, and ask him to have Craig Schramko reconsider his, and maybe come back and give us good solid reasoning why not, because that's the only solution to the problem. The turnoffs are already there, so to eliminate them isn't going to do any good.
Okay, let's go back to that 100%, whatever, how many years ago, was Levi there then?
Yes.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Grant just took over...
When they built their last, got them all out, so I think this got a little...
Four years, didn't he?
Yeah.
Two? In our letter, we should refer back to that letter.
And didn't Dell Rempel?
Oh, he stepped in.
Stepped in.
He was in the middle of it when, you know, Paul went...
We should refer back to that letter and have a point that, you know, that we tried this before and not very, not, no success. this before and not very, no success at all. And still on the same problems, more problems.
I talked to a couple of big contractors, and they say that there's turnoff lanes going in other parts of the state, so.
Well, I'll underneath, came to motion to write a letter to the, probably the director. You'll make a motion? Is there a second?
Sorry.
There's a motion in a second on the floor. Go ahead.
All right, I shouldn't jump in or hurt anybody else, but I'm not a fool as to what we're doing here. Obviously, something needs to be done, and left-hand turn lanes would be probably the cheapest and quickest solution. I just want to make sure that we're stepping through the process correctly and not jumping ahead simply because in the research I've done, if you go back and look at why did the O T assume what they're doing, they have a process for why they're doing it? And I thought they necessarily agree with it, because they have a design built standard in school, and they've got a full book, and I haven't gone through the whole thing yet, but I reject that their rationale for why they're not allowing left-hand turn lanes in certain locations has to be either narrowness of the median or include close to another left-hand turn lane. And I don't know if there's a process you need to go through, what they say we won't put them in to maybe, you know, step through the system. I just want to make sure we're going through the process correctly, though, and I agree that I think left-hand turn lanes are probably the easiest and quickest and cheapest solution. But I just want to make sure we're doing it right, so.
Okay. Well, and I guess that brings up to me again, we, those turn lanes, those temporary turn lanes were all in there when the state highway was, when they were hauling on the state highway, they were all temporarily put in there. Why'd they take them, why didn't they make them permanent?
That's, that's a very good question. I think part of what it comes down to in the real action on their policy standards and how they do things is they generally don't put in standalone turn lanes unless it's a part of another project, like another overlay or widening of the highway, simply because they feel it costs too much for a lot of that you get the, get the turn lane for them if you're putting that single or, but in this situation, we'd be putting in multiple. So I think it's, it's a fair question to ask. One, end the outturn lanes, and two, you know, we don't, we shouldn't have to wait for it to be part of another project because it's something that needs to be done, so that, you know, as soon as we can possibly get it done for Grant Levi. But like I said, I just don't know if there's a certain process that they want to go through or, you know, step in board, you know, writing a letter to Grant Levi immediately, or I'm just, that's my only question on it, you know, in terms of a process or a physical process or something like that, after they come back with the, with the idea or something. That's my only question.
My comment on that is it sure, it certainly isn't going to hurt. And they have the contractor, mobilization shouldn't be an issue, the contractor lives right in the middle of the, of the project, so to speak, or on the end of the project of, and if they trust him to put them in for, turnoff lanes in for him for Senate, they sure should trust him to put turnoff lanes into all the way out to where he's, he has the business.
No, and I don't disagree, I, I'm supportive of the idea. You know how it is, sometimes if you don't go through the process correctly, you know, people get angry, and I don't think they will, but I just, just for the sake of wanting to bring it up, we get it.
I appreciate that, Adam, thank you. We have a motion in a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. We'll move on to the Lake Region District Rescue building update.
I brought Steve Allen, he's been a longtime member, and has been on our building committee, so I made a few questions directed towards him, or how we're transpiring, and we'll try to ask him or answer him.
Will, I took a little peek around just before we came here, they've made a lot of progress in the last four days since the last time we saw it. Foundation-wise, all the sewer is in, the water is in, the electrical conduit is in the floor, forms are formed for the drains. Heat tubing in the floor is about seventy-five percent complete, and I'm thinking once that other twenty-five percent is in, they're going to start pouring the concrete. Kevin and I were watching Young Man Clear Path, we figured it was so the cement trucks could get in on the west side, so we're thinking they're going to pour pretty quick. The building is on site, the framework in there, so I think once they start that, it's going to go pretty quick. Everybody's kind of waiting for their turn. You folks have any questions for me?
Who's doing this network? Go.
Police group.
Police group, okay.
They have quality foundations, kind of a part of each other.
Is there a round lane?
Pretty sure it's a round lane.
We did have a question come up, I guess we were, they were talking about adding those, I don't know what you call there, guards that you put before, in front of the, by the corners of the doors, the garage doors? You know, like they, you know, have the orange, or the yellow, what do they call them, buffers or barriers? You know, and that's an additional expense we didn't consider. Don't remember the exact number if we're going to add them at this point or not, but, you know, it's, what was the ballpark, it was like ten thousand dollars? Give or take a little?
Yeah.
So we can't, haven't quite decided how we want to, you know, we're starting to add closer to our dollar amount, and we don't want to over, overdo it, so.
That was, that's what, that was my question, is where are you at dollar-wise with what you've got going on so far?
Well, the building bid was three forty-six, and then we have, the electrical will be the next big expense, plus the apron is another fifteen. You know, so, and I think the electrical came in at twenty-five, so we're really close, I mean, we're right at the, you know, of course, strategy was the donation for taking some off of our concrete bill. That was seventy-five hundred, so that'll drop it back a little bit to cover some of it, so. I guess our consensus right now is to hold off on that, you know, to not do that portion, but I just want to, in case anybody felt differently, but.
Those aren't in any part of the floor that have heat or anything in it?
No, that would probably be on the apron outside the building, so if they're backing a trailer up and you don't hit the edges and bend the, you know.
They're basically.
Protect the building edges from.
You could put those in either.
But you're going to put an apron on it?
Yes, we want to.
You want to put them in there, you don't want to go back.
You don't want to go back and do it later.
They're going to come in, they're going to pour the building foundation, and I'm guessing they're going to come back and do the apron out later, so we don't have to make a decision right away. But I'm just putting it out there that that's an option that we're considering, and we're kind of waiting to see where the rest of our financials come, you know, make sure we're trying to stay within our allotments.
That's a good question for police to ask, and what.
Yeah, and that's what we're going to see, if you, and we've talked about, can we do, you know, labor trade, you know, can some of our guys go over and do the labor work and just put them in and then just pour around on it? So there's some things, just, we're going to try to get a little closer price and see what we can do, but those are the things that are going to come up and, and get us is these little, little things that are going to start adding up, but, so they made pretty great guns here this week, I was, they're.
Might be able to justify it through insurance, oh, look, if the insurance company gives you a break for having them, but I've seen people drill holes in cement and put two-inch weld pipe up, and then just slip one of those tubes over.
Plastic cover that kind of just decorates it.
For the looks of it, and that'll be a heck of a lot less than ten thousand dollars.
So we're going to do some further checking on the prices and see what it is, but, you know, the normal ones are about six inch pipe, I think they are usually.
Yeah.
And they have the yellow, usually a yellow cone.
Have you talked to the cement guy about this?
No, police has just brought it up as one, if you wanted to do that option while they're doing it.
And we have a bid price of twelve hundred dollars each, five doors.
So that's ten, so there's twelve thousand.
Wow.
Well, we have five doors, you have to have one on each, I'm guessing.
You have to, one on each side of the door, you have to have two for each door.
So it gets to be quite a bit, you know, and, Kevin, do you have any other buildings?
Um.
I don't think you do.
Our main shop, but that's all I want.
So it's just, we're working on it, and I'll bring it back if we just, you know, want to, and see what we decide to do, but I don't, I think at this point, I think we're going to put that on the back burner.
Well, I'd really like to commend you guys on how you, you know, really tuck your noses to the grindstone and put this together with the least cost you possibly could and donate the time and effort that you have into getting a new building here, so.
We're starting to see.
Would that every, would that every entity were this easy to work, then it'd be awesome.
We've been kind of blessed, a lot of the contractors in the area, they've volunteered some things, and there's going to be some donations back, and several. And that's why some of the, some of these costs are a little not defined just yet.
Yeah, not.
But we've, we've helped a number of these guys through the years, and they're sort of paying us back, and all, it's kind of coming around, and.
That's why we kind of have the exact numbers.
Yeah, so.
Very good to hear, I think it speaks well for a good community effort.
A lot of people are stepping up and then doing, I'd say, approaching strategy with a simple question, and they respond very well. And that's the same thing we're getting from our other contractors, is, you know, that, you know, they're more than, they're doing what they can. So it's very good to hear, and we're starting to move forward, we're starting to see progress.
Is there other avenues for fundraising that we have been exploring yet?
Well, we've started going after things, but I am hitting the end of the list. We just got another commitment from North Florida Telephone, they're throwing two thousand dollars in the pot. I think right now we're, I think commitment-wise, or stuff that we've actually received, we should be right around that fifty-five thousand.
What?
So we're kind of looking at finishing things with that. But again, we'll see how things unwind, you know. That's kind of our, we're holding that up our sleeve so we can make sure we finish things properly.
And there's another way to look at it, you know, once the product is finished, it might be an easier sell for fundraising, so.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to have a large, like an open house and have people be able to come out, a grand opening kind of thing, once the building's up and we're in it, and kind of have things, you know, just to show the community, you know, what the, you know, what we've been doing for the last year with this, this building. So I think that would be a chance for us to maybe do a little bit of a fun, sort of kind of a fundraiser as well, so.
Okay.
We have, we have the people here, and they could probably do a lot of good for us as far as getting word out.
Well, and Eric, that, that cost, I'm a couple nights with Eric and trying to keep it in the, in that, and, you know, when we always put stuff up in the paper, we need to, so, I mean, you know, we still try to keep in touch, you know, about once, once a month, I think Eric has to be gone, so, you know, we're still trying to keep it in their minds and.
Sounds good.
Great.
What are, what are the other counties putting in, Steve?
Well, we have.
Pretty minimal.
Town or county committed to, what's it, five thousand over a five-year period, I think. Nelson County declined, Eddie County, we haven't heard back from. Benson County did make a commitment, but I don't know if we've received any of it.
Yeah, that's what they told, Stephen told me at Law &amp; Sports Center, you know, they talked about it and they were going to.
And they approved it, but they just never followed, I don't know where it's, just we'll have to make some.
I'll probably have to remind them.
If you would, yeah, or I could call them, you know, and see where it's going. Because it was, they, and then, of course, the tribe has, gave us a check for five thousand the first time, and I don't know if they, you know, initially, and then they've said they would try to do that yearly, so we're still on that.
Anything from the city?
No.
Like we've already talked about, when we, I think when you have the product about completed, I think maybe go back to some of these organizations, the public identities and.
Have them on a board and thank them for their cooperation, like our contractors and everybody else that's also.
Make sure you bring their checkbook.
I think it's going very well, I just think the weather's kind of slowed us down a little bit, and, but, so I think, you know, once that concrete goes in, it's not going to take long to put that building up.
All right, thank you. We want an update on the Kangada lawsuit. Been questioned by several entities about why there's never anything about it in, in our meetings or in the news, and so I asked our state attorney to come tonight and give us a composite of what happened, who's being sued, where it's at, and so that it is of public note.
Well, the, most of you probably know, the lawsuit was against some private individuals, against Ramsey County, against Lake Region District Health, and against the director of Lake Region District Health. One of the private individuals settled out. There was a motion for summary judgment, which Judge Sturven granted, which dismissed the lawsuit against Ramsey County, against Lake Region District Health, and against the director of the district health unit. There was an appeal, and that case was argued on May fifteenth or sixteenth, so the Supreme Court is taking that under advisement at this point. The way I read the, the argumentation of the notice of appeal, the county is pretty much out of it. One of the footnotes from Dan Gostad's brief was that the notice of appeal did not include the dismissal of the lawsuit against Ramsey County, so that wasn't even an issue on appeal. So the way I read the case, Ramsey County is totally off, out of the lawsuit at this point. So at this point, the only thing that's going on is the arguments are, again, under advisement at the Supreme Court level against the district health unit and against the director of the district health unit.
Yeah, they're still considered part of Ramsey County, correct?
The, well, the district health unit is a political subdivision through a joint powers agreement with Ramsey County, along with a number of other counties, and that's authorized under the law. So the county theoretically still has an interest in it, but through the district health unit. So Ramsey County is not a part of the lawsuit at this point, just the district health unit.
But since we're attached to the district health unit.
In that respect, it is, but as far as entities involved, Ramsey County is out of the district health unit, and they won on it, but at the district court level, Judge Sturven granted a summary judgment motion to dismiss the cases against the district health unit, the county, and the director of the district health unit. The notice of appeal was just pertaining to the district health unit and to the director, so apparently there is no, no issues on appeal, and no appeal in regard to the dismissal pertaining to Ramsey County.
What do we, of the district health unit, expect an answer then?
Well, I've seen the Supreme Court come down with decisions within thirty or sixty days, and I've seen them take a lot longer. At this point, there's, the summer can kind of slow back a little bit, the Supreme Court just lost their five law clerks, and they're in the process of rehiring law clerks to do a lot of the legal research, so it might take a little while before they come out with the decision.
Anybody have any questions for Lonnie? Okay. And then we'll move on to discussion on the library board appointment. I did see at a prior meeting that the bylaws of the Lake Region Library had been changed a bit. We've gotten to a point with the library where Ramsey County pays as much or more into the library fund in the course of a year as the city does. And the representation before was two people appointed by the county and five people appointed by the city. And we changed that because of the change in the, in the fund. And we changed that because of the change in the funding to be three people for the county and four from the city. At this point, we have two people who are going off the board now, first part of July, and one will, they were both city appointments. However, now that there is, there are two openings, one will be appointed by the city and one will be appointed by the county. Generally, we, and I don't know how the city's doing it, I haven't talked to anybody over there, but generally, we'll put a notice in the paper requesting, asking for interest in appointments to the library board. And I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on that because I guess there were some questions.
You want a motion to advertise for...
Yes.
I'll make a motion to advertise for position on that, a county position on the library board. Second.
Any other discussion or questions? Oh, can we get that put in the paper?
Who's on there?
I and Angie Risenour. Angie Risenour is going off, and why haven't we just come off? They have to.
But do I?
And now we'll get a third, and now we'll have a fourth person on. Our second person on is Lori Brocher, the minister from Methodist Church.
So we're trying to fill Risenour's out?
Right, we'll be filling Risenour's. I just want to do it the way it's supposed to be done, and I wanted to make clear why the change was made, because I think there was some question as to how come the county was appointing rather than the city for that second position, okay? Any questions? We'll move on to new business. I have a series of liquor licenses here, can you approve?
No.
Do you approve the second?
Any discussion? Everybody had a chance to see who all of you are. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. And we have a letter of transfer here.
Motion to approve a letter of transfer, second.
A motion and a second to approve the hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-four eighty-eight from the County Human Service Fund to the Social Service Fund. All those, you have to do a call?
Yes.
Call please.
Light on?
Light on?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Motion carries. And we have a site authorization.
Motion to approve.
From the Trail Bill Club, the Flyway Bar, a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. And we have one homestead credit.
Motion, second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the homestead credit. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have a gravel question.
To back this up a little bit, we have been struggling with the fire range for the law enforcement, our committee, for a number of years, since the lake kind of overtook the one we were using.
The what?
The lake.
The...
Our pistol range, shooting range, fire range.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's south of Max on the gravel, over that draw, well, we tried to save that with some different, and, well, we just can't keep the water out. We bumped it out one night, and the next day it was just as full as it was and we bumped it out. So we abandoned that. The city has some land right to the north of that, and they provided us with a pile of dirt. So through a lot of help from Kevin and his guys at the county shop, we've been able to use front-end loaders, and we've basically made our own new range, or trying to. We're at the point now where we're almost ready to, we've got everything pretty much going that we need, but we need some gravel for the very front, probably fifteen feet of our firing line, because that's where you dig your target holes in and put all the posts in for the targets. So I know Kevin measured it, and it was about, if you're roughly fifty yards, you retain?
Yeah.
So I guess my request was whether if the county would consider donating the amount of gravel we need to gravel that portion, or reduce rate maybe from the cost of buying it, and we'll have to, we'll figure out a way to try to pay for it.
How much?
It's fifty, well, around fifty yards is a pretty good estimate. You said it was a twelve-something yard, so about seven, eight hundred dollars. It is city land, it's owned by the City Devil's Lake. We have had donations for other things from the college, game and fish, we're approaching the highway patrol, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, their law enforcement portion, the other sheriff's departments, you know, and we're all trying to chip in as much as we can, so we're getting a lot of things done. We've had some of the contractors help us come and do some dirt work that we didn't know how to do, but this would be a big, kind of our last, you know, what we really need to do to get up and running again. So I guess, just their request, if they would consider donating that from the county to...
So, second. Can you get gravel out the shop?
We'd have to haul it in.
Haul it in? We do have gravel there.
What do you think?
Can you haul it yourself then? You haul it yourself?
For that expense, I guess I could ask them.
Or would you hire your sopers or somebody, or...
Well, that was the point of having someone else do it, is, we donate a lot of time.
They have donated, they've been fantastic, and they've donated a lot of time, and I know that.
Honestly, I was hoping somebody else would step up and do the gravel, but...
Well, and you know what, if the answer's no, we can approve somebody else.
It's city-owned.
I kind of agree with him, but...
They gave us a loader for, I don't know.
I kind of agree with him, so I'm okay if you say no. I just want to ask.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion, we'll do that.
They aren't being very helpful.
Let's just do it so everybody has a better situation.
Well, should we start charging the city officers to use the pistol range?
It's their range.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm sorry, I wouldn't start...
But it is a benefit for our whole area, I mean, but...
Yeah.
It is a big expense.
So what do you think the expense would be, give me around a number, please?
Then eight, nine hundred dollars is probably close, that's all they need, is fifty yards, but...
We've got to get it here, it doesn't cost them that.
Next week it'll be another fifty, and the next week it'll be another fifty.
I'll need another motion.
For fifty.
Motion's for fifty yards?
Motion is for fifty yards of gravel, if it goes beyond that...
We're on our own.
We'll...
Ask somebody else, yeah.
Talk to the city.
Yeah, honestly, just because I don't mind doing it, it's just I thought somebody else is...
Trust me, I agree, but...
You want to get it done.
I don't mind doing it.
Yeah, you want to get it done.
We're ready to be...
Okay. I have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Couple, same sign.
Thank you. As I said, Kevin and his guys have been fantastic, and every time they bent over backwards for us, and I just want you to know that they have, and we greatly appreciate it, because that's the way we've been getting it done, is by his gracious help, so, I mean, I want the commission to know that he's already provided a lot to us, and we greatly appreciate it, but...
For coming time, we're acting.
It is.
Okay. The only announcement is that the president's tour has been rescheduled for Thursday, August fourth, everybody's got a sheet on their desk. The other announcement I have is that we are working on this grant from Hardview, the Hardview Foundation for underserved counties, and we did get a letter from the Lake Social Service District and the Law Enforcement Center, Rob Hatch, Rob Johnson, that they are working on putting it together. This may mean coming to a point in time where the county would ask to do, be asked to do some kind of a match, and that's why I want everybody to be aware of it. It's a county, it would be an attempt to get more services in for addiction counseling, and it would be directly involved with, it would be directly involved with the Reentry Center in particular. So there are a lot of things to work out, but they have no program at this point in time.
I don't think our tablet went that far.
Aye, it was only sent to the chair.
Paul?
And I think it was sent to the District Health Unit, the Sheriff's Department, and the Chair of the County Commission. Is that correct?
I didn't see who all sent to her.
You got a copy of it, Ed?
Yeah, I got it right here. Can you get it? Looks like Solskjaer's every time.
Okay. Any other announcements?
I just have a question for Ed, or Mark, or Steve, who's the interim administrator of the Law Enforcement Center?
Steve still is, but we kind of voted last week to step up Rob Johnson to oversee the jail.
I was just wondering, because it's supposed to not face, because he is the administrator, so...
You know, Steve could probably elaborate on it just a little bit, I mean, that was what we voted to do last LACB, just to take some of the pressures off of Steve. Kind of a joint effort, I guess you could say, so...
And you're advertising for a new administrator?
Till the end of the month, taking applications.
All right, is there anything else coming for the board? Or adjourned?